It's six fifty-nine. And some seconds.
We have five seconds. Here we start our call. All right, it's seven o'clock during the call. The meeting of East Scotian County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, September seventh. But please. Remain standing for a moment, silence, please.
As we recognize all of our first responders and military, just keep them in mind. Thank you, and also happy Rosh Hashanah to our Jewish neighbors. This is the first day of their ten-day celebration leading up to Yom Kippur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also have one quick announcement that was not on the agenda in the chairman's report. In front of the row there is Kevin Rowley, and as accustomed to being done here, he is being introduced officially to the Board of Supervisors as an employee. He was hired under the Code Enforcement Department as an inspector. He's been with us for about three weeks now, I think, right? Two? Okay. So he is just here to say hi and just wanted to introduce you to our newest employee.
You have her support, and you probably already have palaces after three weeks, so we wish you well.
Well done.
Welcome.
Thanks, Kevin.
And all the best, also good success. Thanks for being here.
This meeting is being streamed on YouTube. And chairman's report, we met tonight in executive session to discuss some personnel matters. In addition to our regularly scheduled meetings, this month, we always meet on the first and third Tuesday of every month. The second and fourth Tuesdays, we'll be having budget workshop meetings. Developing our budget for 2022. Those meetings are public meetings, so they're open to the public if you would like to attend. Finally, the East Scotian Board of Supervisors and the Pipeline Task Force jointly sent a letter to the Public Utility Commission urging them to halt MAA One operations pending geophysical investigation of the West Whitelands sites. They now have, I think, twelve sinkholes that have opened in that area with car soil. We did that because while the massive problems are in a neighboring township, many of you and our other residents travel that area, they shop in that area, they go to the library in that area, and they work in that area. So we felt that we needed to support that effort. So if you would like to see a copy of the letter, it is on our website.
Mr. Chairman, if I may too, we did meet in executive session on August twenty-third as well to discuss personnel matter.
That's right. All right. Tonight, we have no public hearings, and we have no emergency services reports, financial reports, so we're going to look at the minutes from the last meeting. And I have a correction. On page three, under Consider Authorization to Conduct a Feasibility Plan on an Alternative Root for Segment B, the comment says, on the line forty-two, it says, in reference to my comment, David explained to his supportive of spending the money to look at what would be detailed to consider alternative root, but he does not want to look at this as an addition to. That should read, he wants to, it says an addition to. So strike.
He does, strike not.
Right, strike not, input.
I also have a couple corrections. Chris, page one, line forty-two. I did not receive a phone call at five AM, but rather, the resident was almost hit at five AM by a newspaper delivery driver. I did get a call that afternoon, but unfortunately not at five AM. And there was one other correction. Page four, and it's line forty-six. If we could just have a clarifier on here, it reads, "An application needs to be completed with Arbor Day recognition or celebration required each year." So recognition of Arbor Day or some type of celebration.
Recognition's probably.
Yeah, recognition, I think, is appropriate. And the last thing was, page five, line two, it says, "We already do much of what is required, expect should be accept," just a typo there. Thank you.
People say you don't read these things. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Move that with the four amendments we just heard, we graciously accept the, and confirm the minutes of August seventeen, twenty-twenty-one.
A second.
Any further comments or changes? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose no, four nothing, thank you. Next is the Treasurer's Report, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. From the weeks of August twelfth, twenty-twenty-one through September second, twenty-twenty-one, the other revenue drivers included our franchise, Verizon franchise revenue, fifty-six thousand dollars, and an insurance payment that we received for a traffic control box repair, Route three fifty-two and Manly Road. We're still seeing high rolling permits and Parks and Recreation class registrations. And most of the expenses are primarily due to our monthly WIGO payment, paving costs, routine operating and maintenance costs, and community day expenses. Capital Reserve Fund, we did have a net cost after trading of fifteen thousand dollars for two new mowers. And the bond fund incurred some engineering and legal expenses for the trail.
Dave, the Verizon franchise revenue, is that a year-on-year increase or just an increase over budget? Because we thought those fees were going down, right, because more and more people are...
Yeah, they're still down, but it's not quite at the level that we forecasted. It's pretty conservative.
We forecasted an increase, and it's not.
And that's a quarterly.
Correct.
Receipt that came in.
Correct.
The trend has been down.
It's down, but...
Over the last five, six years, the trend has been going down.
Correct, it's just not down as much as we forecasted twenty-twenty-one budget.
Thank you. Anybody who would have further questions?
I want to ask two questions. The third page in, the debt payment. First of all, can we, do we know on the second level? The second level, we've got this five million, three hundred and ten thousand. I guess, is that what's left, or is that the total?
That's the total, the principal originally.
How much of that is spent, do we know?
Do?
If you're not sure, do me a favor and do this next meeting.
I haven't, I'll provide it next to me.
I appreciate it. The other question I had is over here, five million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand is the remaining principal. We only paid five thousand, is that accurate?
In principle, yes.
Okay, okay, so it's all interest now?
Well, fifteen thousand.
I can't do math. Fifteen thousand then. So it's primarily interest at this point.
Correct, but do a structured bond.
Okay, thank you.
Like you look like you're going to press a button.
I was going to comment on it further, but I'll be there on the bond.
Any other questions?
We need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Let me move, Mr. Chairman, that we graciously accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the Expenditure Register and as summarized in the Treasurer's Report.
I have a second. Go ahead, do a second. I have a second. And I just have a quick question about in the Expenditures Register. I just want to point this out, page one, batch two of six. And Dave, you and I talked about this earlier today. Vendor number twenty-eight ninety-eight, Aquascape, that's for the pond treatments that we're currently putting out for the various ponds that have been rehabilitated. This is a recurring expense that needs to be, we need to be mindful of the ponds that we have yet to rehabilitate. This is going to be an expense that we're going to be putting out for all of those other ponds as well.
Yes, and that's something we're going to look after the budget.
Correct.
Any further discussion from the board? Any comments from the public? See, now I'll call a question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries for nothing. Okay, under Old Business, we need to consider entering into a power purchase agreement. Joining with Westchester, we've discussed it at previous public meetings. Tonight, we're being asked, along with other municipalities who have already signed on, to basically go out into the marketplace and request proposals at a fixed rate of a fifteen-year for, this is for the power that the municipality uses to turn our lights on and run our business. The idea of a power purchase agreement, just for the members of the public who are here, is that you can actually enter into a long-term contract, and that money is used by utility to actually go out and build green resources, so build a solar array or put up a windmill or whatever. And then that's why it's a fifteen-year contract over time. So this is a joint effort that has been developed by the Westchester Area Council of Governments with five municipalities and the borough. So that's kind of where we are right now. What we're being asked to do is just sign one to going out at a certain rate to the community to find out if any utilities are interested in building facilities at our rate. So Derek, you want to give any further color to that?
I was going to say, Mr. Chair, I don't have too much more to add. You pretty much summed up. The terms would be a fifteen-year period contract with the other Westchester Area Council of Governments municipalities, so there are six total municipalities. The other five have signed off on it so far, so we would be the last municipality that they are waiting for. Even though it is a fifteen-year period, the pricing is fixed for three years. And Dave also worked pretty hard on this memo here with the historical supply pricing, so if he wants to add anything to it, he can do so as well, but I think he pretty much summed it up.
I'm going to cut to the chase a little bit here. My sense is that we need some input from our solicitor on this fifteen-year commitment. Municipalities usually are not going out on long-term commitments like this. I'm very supportive of this as an action item for us to transition our energy and as a demonstration as a municipality and local government, as our fellow members at the COG, the West Scotian and East Bradford and West Whitelands and the borough. But I think we need a little bit more information and clarification on the actual contract because it is a pretty much locked-in-to contract. It's a volatile market with energies. The green is really important. But I think we need to make sure our authority is intact before making or considering this kind of a contract. And I'd suggest we table it. We're not under an absolute deadline to get this approved, at least from our standpoint as a member of the Westchester Area Council of Government this month. So I would suggest we table it, get some information from our solicitor and show it.
I'm in favor of it as well, but I think that the idea of it is great, but I think that we need a little bit more information as well.
I have not had an in-depth discussion with our solicitor on this particular topic, so if it is direction of the board to do so, I can certainly do that.
We don't need a motion to table it, we just simply...
No.
We agree to table?
Yep.
John?
I'm in agreement.
David?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. We need an opinion from our solicitor on extended contracts, so we'll do that.
All right, thank you.
All right, good, thanks, everybody. Just by way of information, our current rate is forty-seven dollars per megawatt. We use about twenty-two hundred megawatts a year estimated. The five other municipalities in the borough have agreed at a cap of fifty-one dollars per megawatt, so we're at forty-seven right now, so it'd be a little kick-up. But the idea is, what's going to happen with ground sources of energy in the next fifteen years, are they going to go up or are they going to get down? Is solar going to become less expensive, et cetera, et cetera? So it's an interesting one to think about. So thank you, everybody, we'll table that for further discussion. The next item for discussion is a consideration of adding a tax module to the new financial software or contracting tax collection to Chester County for their collection. We've discussed this in other public meetings. In our last meeting, we approved the purchase of new financial software, which is needed, but we carved out the tax collection portion of that for further discussion with regard to, should we have the Chester County folks collect the taxes as they do for quite a few, how many, twenty?
Twenty-five municipalities.
Twenty-five other municipalities, or should we keep it in-house as we do now? So I will open that up for discussion.
I'll start it off, I guess, by saying that I am supportive of the staff's recommendation to third-party our tax collection administration to Chester County, to the Treasurer's Office. They are already handling twenty, twenty-two or more municipalities, so they do it well. My prior experience, I know that they do it well, they're accessible, and they operate very professionally. The only question I have is the implied savings of time with staff, that the time will otherwise be used for valued services within the township. And I'm not sure I have full clarity on that. I'm supportive of this. I've seen the numbers that Dave has put together, and if you accept the implied savings of staff time to third-party this, it is a positive. And so I accept that. It's just the clarification is ensuring that the staff is, and I know the staff is full presently. I don't want to use the term that they're swamped, they're overburdened with work and tasking, but the implied savings is important in this equation, but the time of that that will be otherwise used for something else, I'm just not sure where that's going to be. And I want to see if I can get some confidence from Dave or Derek on where the staff time will be in lieu of collecting it in-house.
I mean, Dave and I have had many conversations on that exact topic. I will let him, it's his department, so I will let him take over, but I think he has some good ideas on what his department can be doing if this doesn't go out to a third party.
Thank you, Derek. Just to mention a couple projects, we're looking at some value-added projects, some cost-benefit analyses. It hopefully will offset anything. It would entail a fixed asset reconciliation project, reevaluation of the capital reserves methodology. We're going to look more closely at the WIGO budget and analyze some items in that. Build a contract database so we can more quickly and easily report, and know when we have all of our contracts coming up, so we can better evaluate vendors and make smarter cost decisions. That's historical list.
Dave, that's helpful. And of course, we have other things we've discussed, we've been discussing our recent storms, infrastructure, reviewing our capital funding needs, et cetera, for long-term planning and consideration for various actions. But it's my understanding that, excuse me, we can enter into this, this isn't a multi-year agreement, it's an annual agreement.
Annual, you can terminate with thirty days' notice.
And of course, the software module is available with the new vendor that we selected, so it's a plug-in essentially, some training and, but we could gear back up if it didn't seem like a value added in the big picture, again, relating to staff, et cetera.
Correct.
So we could go back to it. In that regard, having the flexibility of not being locked into it and going from a year-to-year basis, I'm supportive of the staff's recommendation at this point in time to go to Chester County as a third-party collector and administrator.
And I think one of the, just real quickly, one of the things I was worried about, one of the things I was worried about looking at from a managerial standpoint was obviously the customer service and how that was going to be. I had conversations with about ten municipalities, and not all just positive, all overwhelmingly positive, which shocked me, and that's something against the county, but usually people don't have that glowing service recommendations when you're looking at.
Yeah.
Going at third-party government. So yeah, it was positive all around on the customer service front.
Yeah, and I can speak to that directly with the experience I've had with them, and you know, the Treasurer Department for the county is very professional and has handled this very well. So if that said, I would make a motion, if I may, Mr. Chair, that we adopt this Resolution twenty-twenty-one, number two oh seven, to authorize township staff to sign an agreement for services with the county of Chester for purposes of property tax collection services at an estimated first-year cost of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, with the caveat that we'll evaluate it over the course of the first year to determine whether we're going to continue this arrangement in subsequent years, twenty-twenty-three, that would be, and beyond.
I'd second that.
Yeah, I support the motion as well. Any other comments?
I supported, I have a comment, so David, simply taking this work from staff here and farming it out to the county and paying for it, is it not enough? What we need to do is make sure that the projects that Dave has suggested he would replace that work with are done. And I want to make sure we follow up, reevaluation of fixed capital and asset reserve fund, developing contract database, managing electronically, cross-training finance and administrative staff, and beginning formal banking RFP. I would suggest that those are the things that we're going to be looking for when we reevaluate this contract in a year or whatever. With that understood, I can support this.
Thanks, John. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? I was going to make a joke, and I like it because we could blame the county instead of us. I won't make that, I won't make that joke. So, okay, I'm going to call a question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries for nothing, thank you. Under New Business, the first item is to consider accepting H.J. Blazinski's bid of nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents for refuse services starting on January one, twenty-twenty-two, and ending December thirty-first of the same year. Dave, you want to give us a little background on the bidding process and where it stands compared to previous years?
Sure. The bidding process, basically, Blazinski, where we take bids from multiple bettors, typically we'll go with the lowest bid, assuming that it's above board and everything checks out. This particular bid for Blazinski, they've done great service force previously. We've had them since twenty-seventeen in a contract. That contract renews annually, and it renews at the same price but with the cost of living increase. So from twenty-seventeen, that price was only about six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the entire year, six hundred and ninety-five thousand. And that stayed relatively flat all the way through twenty-twenty-one, forecasting through the end of this year. Now in twenty-twenty-two, the all-in bid, which includes twelve months of roadside littering pickup, and that's about forty-two hundred dollars a month. If they did it every month, that first year would be the nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar number.
Okay. So we're looking at a...
Two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar increase versus what we said.
It was the lowest bid.
It was the lowest.
And there was two bids, and the other one was...
Far.
Did they give us any explanation of why it's basically going from six ninety-five to nine twenty?
There was no specifics, it was just, you know, costs are going up, a conversation, so I would say no. I think they're comfortable with what they bid at, and I would say they're probably correct based on what number two was, which was one point seven million, and that was a escara, but there wasn't any specifics, just mainly, you know, labor costs and maintenance of the trucks.
Maintenance of trucks, correct.
Is this going to mean a cost increase to our residents?
Likely. We don't have a twenty-twenty-two budget yet for the refuse fund. That will dictate what the increase will have to be, but I'm fairly certain it will go up.
Dave, excuse me for interrupting, but let me ask a question. The layout here that you have is a little bit confusing, but under the indicated low contract bid by H.J. Blazinski, at a total cost for twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two of nine sixty-two, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, if you divide that by the thirty-three hundred and eighty-three households or dwelling units, I get seventy-one dollars per quarter. Am I missing something? That nine sixty-two, four seven nine is all-inclusive, including the roadside litter? And if I do the simple division of nine sixty-two divided by the thirty-three, eighty-three, and then divided by four again quarterly, I'm getting seventy-one dollars, two hundred and eighty-four dollars a year. Currently, we're at three hundred dollars a year. What am I missing? So in other words, you indicate that we might have a rate increase, but that's not the number I'm seeing when I do the division here, at least for twenty-twenty-two.
This is simply for the collection services? This does not include any other administrative or additional costs, which would be in the budget.
Okay, so this doesn't include our in-house preparing of bills and collection administration, correct? But that is an internal cost that the staff as employees is already handling. We don't, we're not adding dollars to that rate per se, are we? I'm trying to wrap my head around this. It's not as if we're going to a third party for that collection administration, it's already built into house. So the actual raw services here... So the actual raw services here by Blazinski, including roadside litter collection, which is great, again, I'm seeing it at 71. So the additional costs that we have, how are they, how do they add, unless we're taking out a portion of those employees as a cost of doing business, and that's added into the rate? I presume that's the answer then, is why the rate would be higher. And then we would just have to consider internally, or as a board at least, how much of that we want to build to the residents as opposed to internalize as employees? Kind of making, might make any sense?
Yeah, and additionally with that, we also currently have grant revenues that offset a portion.
That are...
Offsetting a portion of the grant revenues.
Oh, you mean for the recycling, we get the recycling 904, 902 grant, whatever that is, every year, that offsets that.
Recycling's in here, right?
Well, recycling's in here, but through the DEC...
It's a separate grant.
I understand that, but a grant should bring the money down, not...
Well, it is, but you don't want to build that into this equation at this point in time.
Yeah, we don't assume, we don't assume that we could get that money.
All right, all right.
So, so a rate increase could be indicated, but it's, on the raw numbers here, it's not showing itself at the moment. So I guess I need, we need more refinement, is to, obviously, if we're going to have to increase the rates, we're going to need to broadcast that and have a rationale for why.
Yeah, that'll be part of our budget process.
And how about with the, this is a five-year, is this a three, one plus one, three years plus one, or is it a straight five-year contract?
One plus four renewals.
One plus, okay. And do we have the inflator numbers with the 23, 24, 25, and 26 numbers? What's the cost of the...
Coal.
Yeah, the coal for the rest of the contract period. Do we have those?
It's what it is.
It is. It's going to come out every year.
Whatever the coal is, they have it.
Oh, whatever the coal is, okay. So two, I got you, I got you, based on, I'm sorry, I missed that point.
When do we need to, when do we need to sign off on this?
Well, you know, the fact that they're the low bidder, and we already have contracted services with them, there's not a big transition there. So the timing of it is, you know, if there was a reason to defer it, we can. I mean, we have four months till the end of the year, and ostensibly with the same contractor. The only thing, reason to defer at this point in time would be if you wanted to consider going out for bids again, but...
And that's correct. And I, based on this round, I don't know why, yeah.
And A.J., Blazinski's been a good performer.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
I think the number is what it is. We've, you know, we've had a good relationship with them, and I think we look at our pencils and sharpen them internally to see what that, what the real rate needs to be for our residents, whether it stays at 75 or if it has to go up, what the rationale is for that. So saying that, my indication I would have here would be to suggest a motion that we would move to award the bid for the collection municipal waste and recycling services to A.J. Blazinski as the lowest responsible and responsive bidder in the amount of $962,479.68 for 2022, with the understanding that there are four years on top of that that we would be annually renewing and approving at that point in time.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Just to make one point, Mr. Chair, I have done historical research, rates can go up and down, so it's not like it's always going to cost more. So Mike has a good point.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. No further comment from the board. Any comment from the public? None. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those no. Motion carries for nothing. The next item on the agenda is to consider street closure for Nelson Lane in Bowtree for a block party, I think.
Yep. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And this actually came up to me probably around two or three weeks ago. And there's, Bowtree Civic Association, I guess, was hoping to close down, again, Nelson Lane in the Bowtree neighborhood for a block party. My understanding is that they do it every year. It rotates locations. So there was also brought to my attention that there may be some opposition to a neighbor or two at the time. So per subsection 225-5 in our ordinance, the street closure of a special event is solely up to the Board of Supervisors. So I am asking the board to take a look at this and make a final determination on the proposed street closure for September 18th. I don't have the specific times, but it is Saturday, September 18th. And I would just ask for a motion, one way or the other, from the board.
I'm going to share, if I might, where I come out on this at this point in time, is what I know. Bowtree has an annual event, the block party. The, if there is, it appears to be a legitimate concern by one property owner on what it has to do with health issues, but the primary issue is access. If the association is able to have the event at that location and can assure that there is an open access, half the street, cartway, if you will, open to ensure uninterrupted access, I could be comfortable with that. But if it cannot, I think there are other locations in Bowtree where this event could occur, and I would not be comfortable approving this under the circumstances if an access cannot be guaranteed in the location that's subject to this request.
I feel the same way about that, about the situation. Do we need a motion in order to have public discussion on this, David?
Yes. We have the, we're required for the ordinance to have a motion and discussion and vote.
And it could be possible that there is an amendment to it after the discussion?
Yeah, but we have a little public discussion.
I was going to say, you can have public discussion before the motion. That's a possibility.
Why don't we do that? Because I know some folks are here. Who else here for this matter? You mean, you, wait a minute. I showed up here today just for that and not for all the other stuff that you're...
Jeez.
Wait, do you want to see it?
It was interesting.
See how the sausage... See how the sausage...
Why don't we open it up for some comment, if anyone can speak for the association?
I don't, civil comment.
Of course.
So what we'll do is, if you want to make a comment, come up to the microphone, because we are live-streaming. We have it set up so that you can be recognized. Just identify yourself and give your comments.
And address. So name and address, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, name and address.
Is it necessary to keep the actual number of the address or just the street?
I think you have to acknowledge you're an East Coast, you're an East Coast resident.
Is the minimum. People do everything differently, I'll be honest.
Hello. Hello, my name is Kelly Trolin. I live at 1650 Bowtree Drive, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Bowtree Civic Association.
Do you, are you a member, are you on the board?
I am a co-president.
Okay, oh terrific, okay.
And if you, if you feel comfortable, you're a little muffled. If you feel comfortable lowering that, that's okay, while you're speaking.
Thank you. So we're asking for permission to have our neighborhood block party on Nelson Lane. We have never needed permission in the past, but because of the opposition, this is why we have to bring this to you. A block party is chosen based on neighbors volunteering a location. Locations are rotated and are selected to provide the least disruption to the overall neighborhood. We always notify people ahead of time and work with any concerns. The last time Nelson was selected as a block party location was 2014. The Nelson location was determined so that, oh, Nelson location was determined this year through the board meeting that occurred on June 15th, and the concerned neighbor was in attendance. And then to say the date, was also eaten out, out the location at the end of July. And then we learned at the end of August that there was an issue with the location. Nelson Lane is located in... Oh, so the reason why we like Nelson Lane is because of all the advantages it provides for us. The cul-de-sac optimizes safety as well as minimizes disruptions to the traffic and the overall neighborhood. In addition, we have five neighbors in the location who are open to hosting the block party. So this is critical for the use of all the things that we need, the electricity, handling deliveries, tables, chairs, porta-potties, providing grills, refrigerator use, and as well as a location for the van and DJ. All deliveries at this point have already been ordered and are directed to be delivered to Nelson Lane. Now, we did try to compromise with the concerned neighbors. We met with the MECA meeting, a board meeting last Tuesday. They wouldn't share with us what their concerns were, but we tried to aggressively come up with a plan to help this situation. We did offer that they would have access from their house to the street. We said that we could put cones to allow this access and keep the party to the left side of the cul-de-sac. Therefore, the party would not be in front of their property at all. We could also put caution tape to prevent people from going on their yard. The block party runs from 3:00 p.m. to dusk, and we have volunteers that help set up as well as clean up, so that the concerned neighbors will not be burdened with the neighborhood event.
First name, is it Kelly?
Kelly.
Kelly. If you will, say, Derek, is there an ordinance say that anything about it has to be? How does the ordinance read as far as what our authority or obligation is here, considerations?
Read it to you in its entirety, so there is no, it's very broad, though, I will say that. The Board of Supervisors shall have authority to close any street or specific part of a street to vehicular traffic and to place barriers or station police officers at each end of the closed portion while construction or maintenance work is underway or a special event is being conducted on the closed portion. It shall be unlawful for any person to drive a vehicle upon any such closed portion.
Okay.
Now, to be clear, this is actually an ordinance that's been on the books for how long, Derek? Since what year?
I don't answer that.
So 2014 or 15?
I was going to say 10 years or so.
It's at least, yeah, it's at least eight to 10 years.
So it actually has been on the books, the Board of Supervisors is supposed to be making this decision each time a road closure is requested, which...
So that's not necessarily reflecting on Bowtree or UConn?
Just so you're aware of...
Maybe just wasn't...
Like, do you know that we notify the township every year?
Yeah.
Right.
Always, every year, we let them know, as well as the police don't know everything in terms of location, what's going on, and go through procedures.
Kelly, as you indicated, you're providing assurance that an access lane on the public street will be maintained and open.
Yes.
The entire event.
Yes.
Now, we don't require a police officer to be in attendance for the event, or we...
It's not required. It's my understanding that Bowtree did inform the township and the township worked with first responders to know that was going on.
You know, I, hearing your representation for the association, Kelly, and maintaining an open lane, that is, that is the safety concern that I have as far as access. And if the access is assured, but, you know, so clearly, I'm listening here, and my, my sense of this is evolving. John, what do we...
I was just going to say, let's hear both sides of this.
Yeah, and I'd like to know, has the association, is there any reason why that the open space behind, I think it was 606 Nelson, how come that open space is not being utilized? For, for instance, for Grand Oak Day, which happens every year, every summer, in my neighborhood, we always use the park at the end of the street because it's open space and it's maintained by the township. There are picnic benches there. It's quite a lovely space. And the neighbors go to quite some trouble with this, and we spend, there's a lot of money spent. Food trucks come in and bouncy toys and whatnot, games and food and whatnot. So why wouldn't the open space be the first thing to really consider? I mean, it's there for a reason. The builders built it there for a reason. It's really for the residents to utilize.
Well, for one, we definitely need electric. There's a lot of electric outlets that are necessary for this event, so a big piece of that is having people with properties who are willing to, you know, give us...
Yeah, we use generators. That's what we do. We use generators.
We use generators. That's something we can look into in the future, but at this point in time, that's not something that we have.
Okay.
How difficult, you rotated it to other locations?
Yes.
How many other locations have been used?
Ooh, I don't know off the top of my head. Any, one, 10?
At least 10. At least 10 have been used, that I remember. We've been doing this for over 15 years. And we have done it in front of the open space. We just let them move it around.
My, I guess my question sounds difficult. Would it be to move to another location where there's not an objection?
It is a little bit difficult at this point in time, because one of the other things is having someone who volunteers in front of their house to utilize all of their resources.
You did indicate there's a gap in the notice and then coming...
And without that, doing this last minute would be a difficult thing. We could be coming across the exact same situation from a different part of the neighborhood, since they were given such short notice of time. So it does make it a little difficult for us.
I'm aiming this, Kelly. Did the, on a concerned property owner, express any comment when you assured them that the access would be open, that they could be able to get in and out, or a first responder could get in if necessary? Was there any...
That person's here, so we do my best to make them stop.
Oh, yeah, that's beautiful.
Let's hear, let's hear both sides.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Kelly, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Lorraine McMullin. Our family... Okay, sorry. Hi, my name is Lorraine McMullin. Our family of six lives on 604 Nelson Lane. We come to you due to this small group of volunteers who wants to put our street on landlocked. Our daughter's a pediatric nurse. I'm also a nurse at a local hospital, and I do have the privilege to care for many people in this community. When you're an acute care nurse in a hospital, you work days, nights, weekends, holidays. We swing shifts. We drive in blizzards, tornadoes, hurricanes, or any other disaster you can imagine. We need to get to work. We have to serve the patients. On our days off, we are being called and asked to come into the hospital to help. The demand for nurses is very, very high right now. We are working fast and furious from the moment we enter the hospital to the moment we leave. Upon contacting the township, I learned that the street closure had not been presented to the Board of Supervisors. And it's alarming to me that a small group of volunteers planning a public event did not follow proper protocol for the street closure. We respectfully come before the Board of Supervisors to hear our needs. We, as nurses, cannot be landlocked.
Can you identify where your house is located?
604.
We're at 604.
Yeah, but I'm looking at a map that doesn't have street addresses on it.
I can show you.
Yeah, we can mention which house. You're here, okay, with this one. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead. I was going to repeat my question. I think the offer to make sure there was a lane open from, you are on the back of the cul-de-sac, that there's egress/ingress provided during the event, for an hour event. Is that, wondering what your response to that would be?
Well, first of all, the, no, I'm sorry. I'm John McMullin, and I live at 604 Nelson Lane. First of all, the boundary, you know, the egress was not even defined, so we have no idea, you know, what the plan was. Second, you know, pulling out of our driveway, there's, you know, we have to back up and then drive, you know, drive around the street, as you can see there. And then, to put cones and yellow tape at an event where kids are running around and all that and saying they're going to watch it, it is a recipe for disaster. A kid can just, you know, kids are kids. They're going to run, they're going to be having fun, which they should, and who's going to be monitoring all night long? So, you know, we're adding a safety and liability issue to this party because of this barrier down the middle of the street.
Can I, I just wanted to ask, this is supposed to end at dusk. Is this something that actually goes later than that? Like, so, so dusk, let's say dusk is what...
No, it's not, it's not.
No, it's not, no, it's not. So...
The streets... The streets-
Wait, 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 wait.
We have, we have attended the, you know, this block party before, and it's been in front of our house before, and it does. I know the intent is to try to cut it off at, you know, dusk, but sometimes it goes over. You know, they do cut it off, you know, at a certain time, but not exactly at dusk. I'm gonna have to disagree with that.
Step up to the microphone.
If they're done, obviously.
No, 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 yeah.
Yeah, when they're done. Sure, sure.
I just wanna read my statement. Again, my name is John McMullin. I'm a husband of Lorraine, father of our four children. Milson Lane is a cul-de-sac of four homes. This event is open to all 334 homes in Boatree, which we classify as a community event. If this was a block party, it would only involve the four homes on Milson Lane and not be open to 334 homes in our development. This is not a block party, but rather a community event open to all of Boatree. This type of event does not belong on the four home cul-de-sac of Milson Lane. In my profession, I've had to request street closures. This is something that townships take very seriously. Life safety and risk management issues are typically reviewed prior to a street closing for an event of this magnitude. This assures that most safety issues are addressed prior to the event, not when the event's going on or, you know, second thought. According to the NFPA, a life safety plan provides for entry and exit points, emergency egress, electrical compliance, cook and equipment, and fire extinguishers. A risk management plan would address barrier management, children, traffic, aquatic hazards, medical assistance, and disability access. Consideration might also be given for onsite presence of the police and other emergency personnel. Taking account of these issues, it would be responsible to have this where it is safe for everyone. There are solutions to celebrate this event. Within Boatree itself, we have two large open spaces, Pond One on Boatree Drive and a beautiful large open space on Eldridge Drive. Having the event at either of those locations would completely eliminate the need for a street closure. Another suggestion would be East Ocean Park, which was built having all life safety and risk management issues worked out. During the last neighborhood meeting on August 31st, a neighbor stated that this event was held on her street and it was not safe. She stated that she did not want to have it on her street again due to unsafe conditions. Milson Lane is not a safe location either. We cannot allow these unsafe conditions to continue. Boatree streets were not designed for these events. We cannot allow a tragedy to be the catalyst for change.
Thank you.
Anyone have questions for others, comments from the public?
Hi, city board. My name is Patty Meltzer. Uh, I live on Milson Lane. I'm the direct ex-neighbour of the McMullins.
Which, which house are you in?
I'm sorry, 602 Milson Lane. My husband Mike and I have lived there for 10 years. And I just wanted to clarify a few things. Um, this block party has been going on a long time in the neighborhood. It's a block party, yes, in name, a block party, but that's always what it's been called. Uh, we could call it something else, but to us, it's always just been the block party. Um, Lorraine and, um, her family have been next to me for 10 years now. We have had two very successful parties, um, block parties on our cul-de-sac. They attended both of them. Lorraine was a nurse then. She didn't have an issue with it then, and I don't know why she has an issue with it now. Uh, we did offer a concession, um, splitting the, it's a very large cul-de-sac. And, um, although it's open to 330 however members of Boatree, it's only for paid members. This year, there's only 162 paid members, so find that under dues. So only those people can actually come and participate because the dues cover the food, help with the entertainment, and all these open spaces that people are speaking about. The problem with the open space is really it does come down to electricity. And, you know, we don't have generators, and that is maybe something as a, a, an association we can work on in the future, but we don't have time to pull that together right now. Um-
Do you have an email group in your, in your, for your city association?
Yes.
Cause with ours, we just send out an email usually two weeks before just to ask for generators, the various other things. So I'm just wondering if, is that, is that something that's not possible? I mean, you're still several weeks away.
It's next Saturday. Um, the party's next Saturday, and, and all of our vendors have already been contacted and the facilities are set for Milson Lane. The other thing is people are, are using their grills. We're actually using the grills from the neighboring houses and going along the street like we normally do. And this is not a situation where ch- children are just running in the streets. The reason why we like the cul-de-sac is because it backs up to our neighbors' properties. We all have very large backyards. And luckily for us, three of our neighbors are connected on one side of the cul-de-sac. The side of the cul-de-sac where I do not live and the McMullins do not live. That is why we're able to block off our side of the street. So if there was a medical emergency and they needed to get to work, which we completely understand and respect nurses, absolutely, but they would have the ability to get out. The only people that would be driving on the cul-de-sac would be the McMullins. My family is going to the party. We're the only other people that would have any reason to be on that street driving. So it would just be the McMullins that would be backing out of the driveway. So I don't know what he's saying in terms of danger and an accident waiting to happen if they're the people that are gonna be driving. That's the part I don't understand. So, um, and I, the reason why I'm standing is because I was the one that volunteered to host it. Um, I, I volunteered back in 2018 when they demanded that it was moved, and we moved it. But the concession back when then, what they agreed to was, let's, let's revisit this. We can bring it back in a couple of years. Well, it's been a couple of years.
Well, circumstances can change. Um, Derek, do we have a, do we have a generator that we would even allow them to? No, we can't do anything like that, can we?
So I, I wanted to give you a perspective from what's happening with 1 Milson Lane on the same side of the street that the McMullins, uh, McMullins live on. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, what may I ask a, a question, uh, and I guess I would direct it to, where's Kelly?
Here.
Kelly, um, and as you represent the association, would the association be willing, uh, and I'm, I'm kinda looking at Derek at the same time, um, to have an understanding that relative to the event and the staging, it's, time is of the essence, if you will. Um, two things interrelated. One is to have, uh, one of the WIGO officers come out and verify an access arrangement that is, um, safe, acceptable relative to their standards of making sure a first responder could get in and out. Uh, and that, um, uh, a, an off-duty officer if available, uh, the association would take care of, and they would, uh, monitor, um, the event and be available? Is that, is that something that, uh?
I mean, the first one's definitely doable.
If the association would even be amenable?
The, the, the first one's definitely possible to set something up with association and officers, see, get advice on access and things of that nature. The other thing you're talking about is getting into a personnel issue with WIGO, and I, I, I'd have to-
Uncertain, yeah. Well, at, at least the first item that, um, that would be a potentially no cost item, so the first one, but to at least examine their location and have any comments relative to the setup of, of, uh, to ensure access and, and that, uh, safe access in and out that would be unencumbered.
So let's hear the rest of the comments.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is, uh, Richard Yelovich, and, uh, my wife, Maureen, and I live at 603 Milson Lane. We, uh, are the last remaining original homeowners in the, in the cul-de-sac. We bought our lot in April of 1987 and moved into our new home in October of 1987 and raised, uh, three children there, and I, I would like to just assure the board that it is extraordinarily, extraordinarily safe environment for children, uh, no matter what the situation. Uh, we in fact now have three granddaughters who have, uh, who are roaming the same streets in the cul-de-sac that their parents grew up on. Um, I, I would, uh, respectfully ask the, the, the board to strongly, uh, consider, um, granting permission for this particular event because we're most excited for the association to hold an event in our cul-de-sac because it's a wonderful event and it affirms the qualities that make Boatree the neighborhood that it is. And I, again, would, uh, uh, ask that the board consider a, a positive outcome. Thank you.
I'm Kate Byrne. I live at 1633 Boatree Drive, like the Yeloviches. I've actually been there since I was four years old in 1989. I grew up there. Um, across from the big pond is always how I refer to it. It's the big sledding hill that all the kids congregate at. And I just wanted to clarify something John said. He said that a board member had mentioned the safety issue at the previous meeting. That board member was myself. Um, I had hosted, it was, I believe, two years ago, we hosted in front of our house with another board member. The reason why it wasn't safe in our location, and I would be happy to host again, was because we live in front of the big pond with the hill and the water. And so having kids on Boatree Drive running down the hill where the pond is was not deemed safe. Every parent was stressed out, like, oh my gosh, there's a kid behind me, like, you know, no one was really actually on the street. We were at the open space, but then you worry about the water issue. Also, as West Tennesse Southern Police Department can tell you, people love to speed down Boatree Drive. So one of the main reasons of doing the cul-de-sacs is because you don't get any of that speeding. And we often ask, um, we go to, you know, common control, the main streets, especially when an event is going on, and they do a great job at that. We're very well connected with them. They usually do come stop by the block party. Um, and as far as the ending at dusk, on the street, it does. We have cones. We've always had barriers wherever it's hosting, especially if it's on a main drag. And at dusk, we remove those barriers, move the tables, and if the party continues, it continues on someone's property, private property. So if somebody were to host the party later, it's strictly on their lawn, in their basement, or in their house. It no longer is on the street because we have to, and the police department has come by and been like, all right, time to remove the cones, let's go. So it does not go past us. It is removed, and I just wanted to clarify the safety issue for my location and why we choose not to have it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jedevi Gerson. I live at 412 Beaumont Circle. I'm a relatively new resident. I've only been there for, uh, three and a half years, but I love, uh, Boatree. As soon as we moved in, I volunteered to be on the board, um, and I've enjoyed coming to the volunteer meetings and doing the best, um, providing the best services to the neighborhood kids that we can. Um, I did a quick count, and we, uh, have 30 events this, uh, every calendar year for the kids. Um, and we do rotate them. So I know you mentioned, couldn't we just do this at Eldridge? We have used that open field, uh, five times already this year. Um, so we had food trucks that did come there. Um, they were events that didn't need electric from us. Um, and the best part about Boatree is rotating the events. So I know our family has hosted a few of the ice cream socials that are only on our property. They don't need to shut down a road. But it is really fun to rotate events, and whenever there's somebody, uh, party close to us, I know my husband and I enjoy walking, so that's the best reason that we have for rotating throughout the 300, um, houses. We don't want to always have it at one spot, and we don't want to get locked into always having it at Eldridge. Uh, I would like to say that two or three weeks ago, we did have a neighbor host, and she happened to be the host directly next to the Eldridge Open Law that you're referring to. Um, and that party, uh, started at 7:00 PM, and we had to end it before 8:00 PM due to the mosquito issue. Um, so not all seasons is that Eldridge Open area perfectly ideal. It was great at the beginning, um, the end of the spring and beginning of the summer, but right about now, it would not be ideal due to the bugs. Um, and so that's all I just wanted to say. We love it. We can't wait till it's, uh, hosted on our street in a few years, so thank you.
Thanks. Um, may I make a, make a, or ask a question, actually? What we have, um, in the memo in front of me is the date of Saturday, September 18th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, that's not next Saturday.
Uh, I think she meant the following.
The following, exactly. Okay, um, I, it's always distressing, and I think I speak for the whole board, when neighbors, uh, argue with neighbors. Um, we, the last thing we want to do is get in the middle of that, um, kind of argument. Um, the hope is that, uh, calmer heads will prevail and some sort of reasonable accommodation will be made by both parties. Um, if we have to make a decision as a board, it's going to make one side happy and the other side unhappy. And I don't know at this point how my colleagues are going to, uh, to vote on it. Um, is it possible that you could go back and try to negotiate a settlement?
I'm comfortable with-
Why don't you come out, okay? It's just because we have YouTube watchers as well, and it's for part of the record. Thank you.
Um, I am comfortable with having it in the back open field. To ask to have a driving lane in the middle of this event, I just think is really risky. I think Milson Lane is wonderful. I have never said Milson Lane is unsafe. I said having an event of this magnitude, then you want to put us in a driving lane, driving through that and the event right next to us. There's beautiful open spaces.
Now, you've made that point already.
No, behind the houses. Right behind the houses.
You've made, you've, both, both sides have made their point, and I think they were well made. What I'm asking is, is it possible to negotiate, uh, a settlement between you, or do we have to make the decision for you?
We, we allowed, we said yes to the party two years in a row, a couple of years ago. And we thought that, you know, there's 334 homes. If you carve out 10 homes per year, there should be 30 spots within the Boatree development that you can do. So once every 30 years, if we rotate it fairly, we have a small group of people saying, these are the three or four or five or six spots we want to have it, and we are gonna rotate, and we're gonna have it there. We said yes, and now we're saying no. Our circumstances change. Life changes, and we're, we're asking for enough, a simple now. And nobody wants to respect that.
Fine, you're, step up to the microphone, please.
Thank you for having us. Uh, my name's Adam Woodworth. I'm 605 Milson Lane. I live next to the volunteer. Um, I do wanna say that I do have respect for, uh, Lorraine and their daughter for being nurses. Um, however, I've been also victims to their parties that they had on New Year's Eve, which was a raging COVID party that they had in the backyard where the entire street was covered in cars. You could not get in and out of the cul-de-sac because of the amount of vehicles over the cul-de-sac.
We're not, we're not here for that. We're here for your issue.
And again, on Father's Day, they blocked the entire cul-de-sac with their vehicles. There was no lane to go in and out of the cul-de-sac. So I just wanna bring that to the point that Lorraine was very concerned about access. We didn't have any access.
Thanks, John.
Hello again. Um, I only wanted to answer the question in terms of, we did try to compromise. When we had the meeting last Tuesday and John did a 10, we did say we'd like to compromise with you. And if you solve a cul-de-sac, so it has two lanes, so the middle where you exit is pretty wide. So you can have a cone down the middle and still have a very good side lane to go. And then to go to the right of the cul-de-sac is not going near where the people are. To the left of the cul-de-sac, that is where the people will be, and it'll be to the left. So they're not driving through the party. It is turning in and going around to the effect of that. So in terms of, it isn't a drive through the party, there is room. There is a wide enough lane at the exit of the street to turn and have it locked off. So I just wanted to make that clear that that does exist in terms of the width.
Can you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you actually show us which is the left side of the cul-de-sac and the right side? Because I don't know really what you're referring to. Sorry.
Okay. So, the left side of the cul-de-sac is-
Okay, so that would be the side that's closed off?
So, okay, so right here is where we lock off.
Okay.
So that they can come out and go.
Okay, okay.
So this is the side here.
Event, show me the event side.
So the event will be that side here, and then this is the access from the other side.
I'm gonna make a motion and have some further discussion. Um, I'm hearing the comments here, um, I think, uh, the, maybe some delay in the approval by the township of this, offset by the delay in the objection, um, for me. Um, the frequency of ingress and egress from the house, it, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be a frequent event. It sounds like the neighbors have made, um, concessions, and, um, I think Mike's comment about having the police, sounds like they've been there before and would come again and check the ingress, egress under. Make a motion to approve the street closure on September 18th on, um, Milson Drive.
Lane.
Lane, sorry. Um, from, uh, and, and under the condition of the, uh, that it, the, uh, event starts at 3:00 and finishes at, at dusk. And that the police, uh, where a police officer comes and assures that there's ingress, egress from the, uh, location.
In advance of the?
In advance of the, uh, beginning of the, of the start of the, uh, event.
Kelly, and you would be the contact person?
Yes.
Okay. I would second that motion. Further discussion?
So to be clear, just so I understand, you're talking about the, the closing half of the street, half of the cul-de-sac?
Like saving, egress, egress.
Okay.
I, I, I think.
Now, this was being.
As verified by the police, uh, in concert with, uh, Kelly as president of the association.
I don't like having to make these decisions. I think that, um, I'd like to revisit this ordinance at some point in the future.
I agree.
I'm just going to say that for the record.
I will gladly look into that.
There's currently a motion and a second.
Just for the record, uh, and the numbers don't, uh, always carry the case. Uh, people have a right to get in and have it their street. Um, I, I, um, I'm going to vote no.
Any other comments? Um, it's going to be. Call the question, um, all those in favor, aye. I oppose no.
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 Motion doesn't carry.
Motion doesn't carry as we only have four supervisors, uh, or other supervisors out.
I would like, I would like to again suggest that people try to negotiate a settlement. You're going to ruin the party and you're going to keep them locked in. So.
So we're not, we're not opposed to anybody having a party in Prince.
Well, when we double.
It's hard to have a party in Princeville.
With a split vote, we, we can't go anywhere. So the general permit is not approved at this point in time.
So we can't have.
No, that's, not, not on that location. That's right.
Why do we get it approved?
You come here and you didn't get it approved. So a different location, the open space would be, you don't have to get a permit to have the open space. That's something that, the open space is available.
But if there's another location, if there's another location you come up with, um, I, I guess by, uh, if there was another location that needs approval before we meet next, then we would, I would leave it to our manager to, to locate it.
Well, uh, no, we can't do that. We can't do that.
We can't do that. The ordinance says we have to make a decision.
We do meet next week, which is before the party.
Right.
That's, we understand, no party. We, we will send the message back to our new board and we appreciate it.
That's, and that's not what we said. We just said not at that loca-, we said not at that location. I'm going to argue with. It's just. We're just about a location.
The fact of that, however, statistically, is that therefore this year there will be no party.
We got it, we understand, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have a comment, you can.
I, it's more a question.
Thanks very much. I hope you can, I hope it works out.
All right.
It was easier to pass the million dollars from Lozenzki than to do this.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda is to consider the passing of, uh, municipal obligation in the most of our pension plans. Um, we noted in the one resolution that there was a typo that, um, the third bullet point should be non-uniform defined contribution plan, not benefit plan.
Uh, it's, yeah, it's actually the last bullet point, Mr. Chairman. Um, next to the Wego administration. That should be defined contribution plan.
Wait, 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 let's go, let's go through each of these. So if fire pension plan, uh, is, uh, fire pension plan is, yeah, well, that doesn't say uniform, non-uniform or defined or contribution. So whatever.
That, 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 that's totally, so let me just give a little bit of background here. But just for purposes of YouTube, the, the, the minimum municipal obligation, as you all know, have to be passed every year, is the minimum we have to contribute by state law based on our pensions. Uh, so whether or not you do it by resolution is, uh, essentially is best practice. Uh, you don't have to, uh, I prefer it just to have it on record. So the four, four pensions is the fire pension plan, uh, which is for our, our fire company. The non-uniform pension plan, which is, that's the lingo used in all the, uh, material, was essentially the, uh, define, uh, define, I'm, I'm sorry, defined benefit plan. And then the non-uniform defined contribution plan. And then also the non-uniform contribution plan for Wego administrators. So there's technically two defined contribution plans. And then there's also the non-uniform pension plan, which is the defined benefit plan.
Okay, so that motion is correct relative to the other?
It's, it's correct relative to the numbers that are there.
The resolution or?
So, so I'm further confused. Um, if, if I look at the financial requirement in the municipal obligation budget for, under, uh, the one that's 125,700 at the public, says non-uniform defined contribution.
Yes, that is the defined, that's a defined contribution.
And under there says non-uniform defined benefit.
Correct. Those are the two terms I have. The last two bullet points.
Both of them are incorrect.
Both of them are incorrect. Correct.
So we just need to, um, John herself.
But the numbers are 100% correct.
Okay, the numbers are correct, it's just the terminology.
And it's not like creating a plan is just a nomenclature.
Yeah, it's a nomenclature, yeah.
Okay, well, we're going to get that right though, right? I want to make a motion, John. I, I would move, uh, to pass Resolution 2021-205 establishing, establishing the minimum municipal obligations for the four following pensions plans. Fire Pension Plan 124,083, Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Plan 0, Non-Uniform Defined Contribution Plan 125,700, and Non-Uniform Contribution Wego Administration Plan 14,850.
Well, I'll second that motion.
Uh, with the, with the proviso that the resolution is, uh, corrected. Corrected.
Yes, okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
I'll call the question, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries for nothing. Thank you.
Okay, the second resolution to go with that item is Resolution Establishing the Township Manager as the Chief Administrative Officer for all pension plans. This is a one-time and done, you don't have to do this every year. This is just the transition from Rick to myself. Um, and we were, uh, advised that it may be good to have it as the township manager versus a person because then I could never, never really have to change it unless you change the title. So.
I don't see that one.
It's the second, second.
Oh, the second, I'm sorry.
2021-206.
2006.
So I would, I would move that we adopt Resolution 2021-206, establishing the township manager as the chief administrative officer of all township pension plans.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Um, I, my only question is, uh, we were talking about four plans previously, but one of them was Wego administration. Am I to assume that that drops out and we only have the first three? Or is Wego administration included in this?
This is acknowledgement more than anything, so it doesn't.
Just acknowledging the township manager?
No, Wego, Wego administration is part of the pension that we have. So it's, it's part of, so talking to Jim Kenny about it, it's actually part of the defined contribution, but we delineate it out for the benefit of the board.
So is that our share of the?
That's our share of the amount.
Yes, interesting, okay. Okay.
All right, any further question on the motion?
I have a question.
One up.
One up.
Yeah, officially, yeah, sorry.
I'm just, I'm just, this terminology.
Yeah.
Linda Hanks, 671 Airport Row description. Uh, what does it mean to be a chief administrator officer?
Good question.
What is that? What do you do?
Uh, essentially, I go over the pension plan every year with the actuaries and the investment officer. And I ensure that the numbers they're giving us are correct. So it's a, it's a legal term, really. I mean, if there's ever anything to do with pensions, from a legal perspective, I would be a person.
Principal contact.
I would be, yeah, or sitting in a courtroom somewhere.
Just to give you some comfort, we have a pension committee, we have outside members. They're actually, um, highly qualified people. We have an outside pension, solemn and an outside, outside actuary.
Has nothing to do with, has nothing to do with investing in the money.
So we, you got lots of idols.
That's what.
Yeah, I, I don't, he's not a fiduciary. That's your question.
That's your point.
Okay.
Hey, I'm going to school in a couple of weeks, right?
There you go.
I'm going to the, the neighborhood.
Neighborhood university?
Neighborhood, yeah.
All right, good. I'll call the question, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries for nothing. Very good. Um, last, uh, new business item is consider stormwater, um, approval.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move to accept the recommendation of the staff and authorize the chair to sign the Stormwater Management Operation Agency agreement for 3/37 Wilton Drive.
I second that.
Any further discussion?
I, I'm just curious, is this a variation, a variance from a code? Or is this, uh, standard procedure under the code?
For?
Just the agreements.
For the agreements? It's, it's standard procedure.
Okay, so there's no variance here?
No, this is just a standard.
That's why zoning isn't about.
Yeah, this is, yeah, it's just a standard, yeah.
Part of the storm work.
Okay, I'm, I'm learning.
All right, any further public comment? There, there are.
John, John, just, just to clarify, any sort of variance from storm work, we go through a lot larger process than this.
Before your comments.
I thought, okay.
Um, one thing I'd like to do, uh, live streaming, most of the public have left the meeting, but I, I want to acknowledge the work of our Public Works Department over the last two weeks, um, with regard to the, the, uh, record rainfall that we received in East Scotia Township. Our part, uh, Public Works, um, department conducted four water rescues of residents on an emergency basis. In addition to that, uh, there was significant damage to some of our pump stations, some of our stormwater management systems, uh, streets and roads, trees down. And our public works guys were unbelievable during this, uh, event. And, uh, and they, I just want to publicly acknowledge and send kudos out to all of the, uh, public works guys that worked so hard. And we got tons of, um, correspondence acknowledging, uh, that. And also, uh, at this time, I'd like to acknowledge some other correspondence, um, from various residents, uh, regarding the fireworks display and the wonderful time that people had at our community day. Really, probably need to read each one of them. Uh, so I just want to acknowledge that Jason and the Volunteer, um, Parks and Rec Committee did a super job and despite a little bit of rainy weather, we had great turnout and a great time was had by all.
We had a motion, we had a second. Did we not have a vote?
Oh, we may not have had a vote on it. Good one, Chris.
Good touch, thank you.
John interrupted our vote, thank you.
Sorry.
There you go, John.
I'll vote yes then.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose no.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chris, you're our de facto.
I'll have a motion for adjournment.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
Uh, I was second.
All right. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
I'm going to need your all signs.
Right. Um, I'll, I'm staying here until the crowd discharges.
Okay.
I, um, actually did step out and make sure that there was nothing happening in the park. That's why I went, I was standing.
Okay.